Welcome to the Goodyear City Council meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the city employee at the back of the room. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to let council know your opinion without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook, YouTube, X, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call the regular meeting into order for September 9, 2024. Seeing all members are here, please join Councilmember Campbell in the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Our Father in Heaven, we are living in such fragile times today, not knowing what will happen today, tonight, or even tomorrow. Our city is so deeply saddened by the loss of such a brave and selfless Phoenix Police Officer Zane Coolidge. His unwavering dedication to protecting his community will never be forgotten. We ask you, Lord, for you to surround his precious family, his friends, his neighbors, and his fellow officers during this difficult time with love, peace, and compassion. We pray for our city as we continue to grow and flourish. We are grateful for the abundant blessings showered upon us, and we thank you, Lord, for your mercies. Make us ever aware of the needs of our citizens and work together as a team to continue to guide the city forward. Guide us in our directions and decisions tonight and every day as a council, for each decision is far-reaching. Bless those who protect and serve us day after day. Bless the first responders, the police, the fire, the military, and surround them with a hedge of protection as they unselfishly protect and serve our city and country every single day. May they know how much their service is appreciated by all of us. Bless our city families with good health and happiness, and our city with continued prosperous growth. In his holy name, amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Please, let's see, we have one communication item. David, you're up to the far. The item is to recognize the Goodyear Little League Juniors Softball All-Stars. Go ahead. Yay!
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. David Seid, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation. I am absolutely thrilled to bring this item before you tonight and celebrate such a huge achievement by one of our Goodyear Little League teams. And I think, as you can see, there's a lot of others joining us in that excitement. For over 20 years, the city and Goodyear Little League have partnered to provide baseball, softball, and adaptive opportunities to the youth of Goodyear. This partnership includes the Goodyear Little League Board, the dozens of volunteers, coaches, and hundreds of players, parents, sponsors, and city staff who all work collectively to provide outstanding youth baseball and softball experiences to the community. We have so many in attendance here tonight to share in this moment, from field reservation staff to field maintenance staff, and to so many others. It truly takes a village, and we are all so proud. This past summer, one of Goodyear Little League's teams advanced farther than any other team had advanced before and took many in the community for a wild ride that we will not soon forget. So many of us watched proudly as the junior softball team took the field in Kirkland, Washington to represent Goodyear on the international stage, including Councilmember Gillis, who was able to attend in person. I'm sure that was quite an experience. To hear more on this accomplishment and the many other accomplishments that many made us all so proud, it is my pleasure to introduce Goodyear Little League President, Christina Garnier, and she's going to say a few words from the league. Christina?
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, and the council members. First off, on behalf of Goodyear Little League, we want to thank you and the city for your ongoing support for the success of this league. Our 2024 season, we had 72 teams totaling over 900 registered players. From those teams, we created an All-Star team for each age bracket. Goodyear had four teams that competed at the state level. We had the 10-year, 10-new baseball team, the 10-new softball team that got runner-up, and the 12-new softball team that placed third in the state. And the fourth team, which is why we are here today, is the junior softball team. They won their district, then they won their state title, and they finally their regional tournament to go all the way to Little League World Series in Washington State. The league could not be more proud of these girls and their accomplishments, and we are very grateful to their families and coaches for their hard work and sacrifices that took place along the way. With that being said, I would like to invite head coach and MLB Hall of Famer, Tim Raines. Say a few words.
Well, first of all, thanks for having us. This all started a year ago. A year ago, we were in 12U, and we lost, we were a game away from going to sectional, and we lost two games. We had to lose two games to not go. And we lost both games by one run. I think, at that time, the girls that was on that team vowed that the next year, we're going to get another opportunity to try to get beyond, not just state, but get beyond state, maybe go to sectional. I don't think we were thinking about World Series yet, but as the tournament went on, it seemed like we were just gaining ground. We were gaining ground, we got to state, we won state, then we got to sectional. We weren't sure how we were going to do there, but we were down in Tucson, and it was 190 degrees every day. And it was kind of tough. It was kind of tough for the girls, and I am so proud of these young ladies, especially being, you know, Hall of Fame player, played for 23 years, and I was, I got the opportunity to go to the World Series. I won two, never lost. Two as a player and one as a coach. But as a father now with two kids playing, my girls getting the opportunity to go to the World Series at this young age. I mean, when I was 14, there was no Little League around for me. You know, I didn't get the opportunity to do the things that these girls had the opportunity to do. I hope they really understand what they actually done. You know, to go to the World Series, I mean, this is like, it's equivalent to being in college, going to the College World Series. That's what it's equivalent to. You guys, 13, 14-years-old, got the opportunity to do it at your age. And I think from this point on, you can realize what it takes to get there, and maybe hopefully teach some other girls that's not your age, maybe younger, and even older, what it actually feels like to get there. I am so proud of you guys. I want to thank the council members for supporting us so much. The city of Goodyear behind us all the way, want to thank you for that. For coming to see us, and it was a lot of fun to see you out there. But I just want to tell you guys, I don't want to be up here too long, because I get to talking, and I don't know how to stop. We're actually only going to lose two girls from this team. And they were our oldest girl, they were our two top pitchers, but I noticed the 12U team had a really good team, and they were pretty close to getting through state. So this coming year, the girls that played this year know what it's like to get there. Now let's make that goal be to win it all the next time we get there. So that's about all I want to say. Again, thank you guys for having us. I'm so proud of these girls and the coaches. I see one of them's not here. He's probably coaching one of his daughters. But so proud, and thank you guys for having us.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Mayor, that completes our presentation, but before we move on to the next, I'd love to respectfully request the relaxed protocol for a moment. The girls have something for you. If they could approach the dais, and we'd like to get a photo as well.
Well, do we want to go down? Want to get the picture first with everybody here?
Joe, down in front.
Yeah, why don't we all go down in front here with the kids? Come on. Yeah, let's bring everybody down.
Well, I thought it was just the mayor. Well.
We want the bigger sign behind us, right? Yeah, we want the bigger sign. Congratulations. You have the biggest. Turn that around for the picture. Yeah. You have to do the hardest thing with the crew all night. Yeah, probably. All right, just take a look at the camera. Great, thank you so much. You guys did it. The council would like to say something about you, okay? We'll start the far left there. Go ahead, Councilmember Gillis.
Well, girls, don't leave, because I'm not done with you yet. I had so much fun, I can't tell you. No, I told you all I had a great time, and I want to come next year. I'm going to plan for it, because I just know that's where you're going to be next year again. Tim, you and all the coaches were just awesome. I was so impressed watching you guys. Baseball's my favorite sport. Sorry, football, I like football, but baseball's my favorite. So whether it's women's or men's, it doesn't matter, I love it. And these girls, watching them, I was like bragging on you to everybody, you are awesome. We never played baseball like that when I was a kid. You guys are freaking awesome. So I just want to say, it was so great. Thanks for inviting me, I had so much fun, and I want you to invite me next year, because I'm going to be there. Thanks.
Councilmember Stip?
I'll be very brief, because I don't want to steal anyone's thunder down the road there, but, you know, as I'm finishing up, four months left, thanks to Councilmember Campbell, not three, four months left. This is probably one of the more exciting things that I've done in the 14 years I've been sitting up here, 13 years or whatever, that I've been sitting up here. So thank you for bringing this to our city, but also for the experience that you've had that will really be lifelong. So congratulations, thank you so much.
Laura Tana?
Okay, great job, guys. I am so proud of you ladies. That is just wonderful. I used to play softball, I was third base pitcher, so I am so proud of you. We never had a team as good as yours, trust me. It is hard, you guys work hard, I know that. I can't wait to see what you're going to do next year. And keep in mind, softball is back in the Olympics in the United States, so hopefully we'll see some of you guys in LA. Great job. I'm thinking big for you guys, you're great.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, I'd say good job. I mean, you guys are definitely role models for other girls, like my daughter, for example. She played last year as well, she's only nine, but yeah, definitely, I'm real excited for what you guys did and looking forward for what you're going to do next year as well. So thank you for working so hard and accomplishing such a great goal. So thank you. Good job.
Councilmember Campbell?
Well, I not only want to thank the girls for representing our city so well, I want to thank all of the folks and the parents that helped. I mean, this has been a huge undertaking to get these girls to Washington, to fund them, to take care of them, and I know how hard it is to raise money, and all of us up here, we're happy to donate. We hope that you take this experience and just build on it, and if you have a dream, live your dream. Don't ever give it up, because you can do anything you want to do. I want to thank our Park and Rec Department for the excellent staff and the support that they give to our recreation teams with David and all of his folks. They're absolutely wonderful. We believe in recreation for our kids, and we are big supporters of that. And we want you to know that we're with you every step of the way. We didn't know that we were supposed to go to Washington to watch you play, but I can assure you, all of us will try to do that, or wherever you end up. So by all means, just work hard and live your dream, girls. We're very, very proud of you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm sorry you had to listen to all the talk about gas stations first, but we were enjoying the opportunity to celebrate and to honor you for your amazing accomplishment. And you were great ambassadors for Arizona and for your hometown of Goodyear. And I just, it was so much fun following you on social media. You guys were definitely trending, and your whole community was behind you. And so thank you so much for all your hard work, and we just are really pleased for all your great accomplishments.
You know, being last, there's not a whole lot to add, except to say honored and proud to be one of us, many of us on here that supported you, getting you there. And I'm sure you guys are going to be going a long ways again next year. So again, congratulations. As mentioned, you've been great ambassadors for the city, got us great, great notice out there for the city of Goodyear. So thank you all very much, and good luck in everything you pursue. Take care. I'm going to give some time for clear out before we start the next piece, okay? Oh, jeez. Right in the middle of it. Yeah, I know. any non-agenda items for the jurisdiction of the City of Goodyear Council. Any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, Daniel Kretzinger.
Come on up, Daniel. You don't have to give your address, if you just give your name and whether you're a resident or not, and go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. I have a handout that hopefully they gave you.
We've got it.
Okay, great. I'm here with my wife, and we're concerned about these. We have, we have the traffic speeders that's going up and down the, our road behind our house. And what happened was, when we first moved in there, there was nothing but a field behind our house, and the road was just, just an old road that nobody liked, you know, nobody would go back there and speed too much, and stuff like that. But they had, oh, it used to be called Laura Buckeye Road. It was in really, really bad shape, so we didn't have to really worry about it, so, about speeders. But if you look at the handout, that's where our house is, is in green.
I got you.
You see it? And so they started building a housing complex back there, where it used to be a field. It's called West Ballpark, Avionet West Ballpark Village. And so they renamed the street to West Ballpark Village Boulevard. So what they came in, when they did the buildings, or preparing the land, they rebuilt the road. So if you look on page two, you'll see now it's a very nice road. It's very wide, and it has bike lanes on both sides. You see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so a lot of people, it's about 600 yards long, so we have a lot of people speed through there. And what happens is, when they speed through there, they make it once or twice, and they leave. So by the time we call the police, they're gone. And I talked to the police, they said we have to be, they have to catch them in order to citeate. So on page three, when the, when the, the buildings get built, which they're building right now, there's the three, the four dots there, that's where you can go exit out of there, and then there's a park that a lot of the kids would like to go and play in. So the speeders, it's basically a safety issue as well. And so, just about 18 seconds I got. So I got some recommendations on the back, to reduce the speed limit to 25 miles an hour, and install, and install speed tables near the pedestrian points, where those little green dots are. Not a, not a speed bump exactly, but a speed table, it's a little longer and a little flatter. Hopefully it'll slow those speeders down. That's the only thing I can recommend.
Okay, thank you. I think, what is it? Go ahead, City Manager.
Yes, thank you. What I would like to do is get our police chief and our engineering director together. We've got your contact information. We'd like to sit down and have a further discussion with you, so we can have a really good idea of everything that's going on in that area.
Well, that'd be great, thank you.
All right, they will be in contact with you.
Will this call? Call me?
Yes.
Pardon me?
They're going to reach out to you and get ahold of you.
They will, they will call you, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And set up a time to meet.
Thank you for your time.
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else? That's it? Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items two to nine only, please?
Number two, approval of minutes. Number three, approve the map of dedication for West Montevista Road, subject to stipulations. Number four, final plat for bungalows at Laken Park, subject to stipulations. Number five, approve the MOU with AZDPS regarding the issuance of alias social security numbers. Number six, adopt resolution number 2024-2423, delegating to the city manager or her designee the authority to exercise the city vehicle designation exemption pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute 38-538.03. Number seven, approve budget amendments and related expenditure authority. Number eight, adopt resolution number 2024-2425, approving the modification of assessment number 11-01-001 within the McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District. Number nine, adopt resolution number 2024-2424, ratifying the conditional approval authorizing the submission of an application for the 2024 Assistance to Firefighters Grant, AFG Regional Grant Award, to the Glendale Regional Fire Department on behalf of West Valley Cities, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents relating to said application, and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement if grant funds are awarded, and authorizing the city manager to approve the required budget transfer if grant funds are awarded.
Thank you, City Clerk. Does anybody on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I have questions on two of them.
You've got questions on two of them? Which two? Oh, you've got a question, too?
Six and nine.
Six and nine. Could somebody come up for number six first? What's yours, Brandon?
Four.
All right, well, let's, let's go in order. Four, final plat for bungalows at Laken Park, subject to stipulations. Who wants to talk on that one? Just a question?
Well, the question is, I mean, I know we just talked about gas stations and near Laken and things like that, but this is on the opposite side of that, where the gas station's going to be like half a mile away or so. But is it going to be for sale or for rent, bungalows, products for the final plat?
Thank you. I believe their plan is to, it's for rent product, but that's not something we review with the final plat. They have the option to sell them or rent them out. That's a business decision.
Okay, I could remember what we, what we talked about when they presented it in the past, so. Okay, I was just curious. I know it is closer to that commercial site there, but just was curious. So thank you, that's all I had. I'm okay with it.
Okay, number six, Councilmember Stip? Police Chief?
No, it's actually a question for the city manager. So if, if this memory serves me correctly, we had people lose their jobs over this situation, is that not correct, a few years ago? Over the vehicle designation and undercover vehicles and whatnot, is this the same situation?
License plates, right?
Yeah, license plates, et cetera.
I am not, I am not remembering it, but I can check into it.
Well, so my concern is, is this. We lost the police chief over that matter, that whole thing that rolled, rolled through, but the designation goes to the city manager. My concern is that we are now delegating it from the city manager to a designee, which I assume is the police chief, which is what it was before, which is how we got into trouble the last time. I don't know that it makes sense for us to be this quick about it for, and how inefficient it really is for you to be the designee versus, you to be the delegate versus the police chief. So I'm just kind of in that little loop, I guess, of accountability. I don't know that there's an answer to that.
Okay, and I appreciate it. I want you further to describe that. I do recall that situation.
We did.
So I think I'd like, then, quite honestly, like to pull this and have it voted on separately.
Okay, we can do that?
Okay. Or perhaps considered at a future meeting, I would leave that up to the manager.
Okay.
Number nine is a general question. In the last three years, have we gotten any grants regarding assistance to firefighters or anything out of the US Fire Administration?
Not, good evening, Mayor, Council Paul Louie Z. Fire Chief. Not that I remember, Councilmember Stip.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Yeah, and this is actually being submitted by the city of Glendale, obviously through the Communication for Council there, and through the group stick, so.
And it's a pretty big grant if we're, if our share is 250,000.
Yeah, so think of it similar to, as obviously you'll remember, UASI grant. So they're submitting for the entire region, and then if we choose to pull that money for training opportunities for members of the Goodyear Fire Department, then we can do that. If not, it gets reallocated to the rest of the group.
Okay. But just for our, for our edification, we haven't received anything from US Fire Administration on any fire grant in the last three years or so.
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's my question on that. So if we pull six, vote on separately, then my motion is okay.
Okay. The only thing I would add on six is, it's a question on whether we get in the administration or we set policy. So that's where I'm gonna disagree with you on that, Councilmember Stip. Number six, I think Vice Mayor has a question?
I do. I appreciate Councilmember Stip's excellent memory, because that was a big, a big issue. I think our new police chief needs to have an opportunity to, to learn about those events and discuss it with the city manager, and then make sure they're, they have determined appropriate guardrails, and then bring it back. That would be my recommendation.
I'm good with that.
Okay, there's two.
Yeah.
Councilmember
Let me, I'll formalize that, then. I'd like to make a motion that we table item six.
Excuse me, Mayor, we already have a motion on the table to, for the consent agenda itself, and we were removing item number six. So if we could go ahead and finish out the consent agenda first, and then take the action on number six after that, that would be great.
Campbell?
All right, on number six, yes, we did lose the police chief, and we lost the police officer over this. And I don't ever want to do that again, so I, I would like you to look into it, and let's do it however we need to do it, but I don't want anything to come back on us like this episode did with, it was just, yeah, it was terrible.
I don't disagree with you, but again, where I disagree is, it's an administrative issue between the chief and the city manager, not a council policy issue. But with that being said, some of you may disagree with me on that, and that's fine. Did you got a question?
I appreciate that. I don't know if it's the same exact thing, but it's similar, so I'm okay looking at it further. But I don't know if it really, truly it was the same, if this is the same apples for apples thing, but they can look at it, so.
All right.
Vice Mayor? I got you. Nope, you're gone. All right. So what do we do? We vote on everything but six right now. So I need a motion from two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, correct? Do I get a motion for that? Got a motion in a second? Go ahead, I guess no further discussion, let's vote. Seven, zero. All right, how do, how do we do with six now?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we table item six to a future agenda.
Got a motion in a second?
So a motion in a second, and that was Stip and Hampton to table with
Table it.
Is there a date certain, or just indefinitely?
Future agenda.
Okay, thank you.
That gives you all the leeway you guys need to figure out one.
Okay, go ahead and open it up. Pass is six, one. All right. Okay, where we going next? We have one public hearing tonight. Public item is to consider the annexation of two properties along South Litchfield Road, south of, west of Lower Buckeye Road for Stream Data Centers, SDC one and SDC two. Open public hearing. Your backup, Christian.
Backup. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Christian Williams, Planning Manager, here before you this evening with a request for two annexations, SDC one and SDC two. Their request includes those two properties. SDC one is approximately .558 acres, and SDC two is approximately 3.34 acres. Both properties are along South Litchfield Road, just south of Lower Buckeye Road, and totaling 3.9 acres for both properties. These properties are adjacent to the Stream Data Centers that are under construction right now, and the applicant is requesting to annex both of those properties into the city to facilitate the development of Litchfield Road to city standards, as that is currently in the county, and Stream is within the city. On July 8th, council authorized staff to move forward with the annexation process for both of the applications, and tonight we are holding the first of the two required public hearings for the annexation and to receive that public input in regards to whether staff should move forward with the annexation or hold off on the annexation. On the screen, you could see our annexation policies, but they generally are about the ability to serve the property, long-term desirability, likelihood the properties would develop in the county, and the general plan compatibility. The proposed annexation properties along South Litchfield Road are owned by two separate entities that will create the Stream Data Center. The general plan designates the properties as industrial. However, the underlying zoning for those properties are RU 190 within the county, so when they are annexed, they will come in as agricultural. They will come in as agricultural, but again, they are intended to be developed as right-of-way once provided to the city. Again, the subject properties are part of South Litchfield Road. They will not receive city services in the way you think of typical properties, but they are within proximity to Fire Station 181, and within, and can be absorbed into the existing police beat that is provided for that portion of the city. So staff is seeking policy direction on the two items before you, the annexation of .558 acres of property into the City of Goodyear, as well as the annexation of 3.34 acres of property into the City of Goodyear. Happy to answer any questions you have about the annexation.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody else that'd like to speak on this one? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Let's open it up for, let's see, closed public hearing, oh, wait a minute, no council action is required on this item? We're gonna open it for discussion, and we have one up, okay? Wally?
My question is on the aerial map.
You gonna put it up?
I apologize.
You can't put it up? Okay. Well, here it is, Christian. So, sorry. What I want to do is, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm familiar with where this is located. Now, is Charles Roberts Air Conditioning just down the street from it? And if you turn right on Broadway, you end up by Microsoft?
Yes, I believe the air conditioning company's over in the Avondale portion, if I'm not mistaken.
It is, and it's not going to be affected by us doing what we're doing.
No, we are annexing to the half of the street, so that the west half of the street can be developed to City of Goodyear standards.
Okay, great. Now, is there any proposed thought to annex further down Litchfield?
I don't know that there are currently plans to extend the road right now, and if you look at the red line, it does look like our city limits do jet off. But I don't believe there's any plans right now
Okay.
Until the 30 is closer, or the Wagner family decides that they want to develop.
Okay, well, it makes sense to put them there, since it's so close to the other data centers. It's a good use of land over there, because we certainly aren't gonna build houses particularly there.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. That was just my, my question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, no, this makes sense, so I appreciate it. And then I had a curiosity question that she had as well. Is that red line our, our city border south of there?
Yeah, they're fun over in this area, but there's, it zigzags around, but we have a little strip that the road's not in our city there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm just, I'm just surprised it wasn't already in the city's boundaries, so. This is, seemed like pure administration, so, but, but yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with it. I just, future going forward, if there's anything else down there that we need to look at for future annexation, for other, other topic, I just, I don't know what the checkerboard looks like down there?
We would look at it by a case by case.
Probably case by case, which is fine. I just, I think in your, the data here, you're talking about likelihood of being developed. Say, other, let's see. The guidelines for your annexation request is that, or it could be annexed by another city or town. I don't know if there's any other portions down there that, that we have a, that could be developed by another city or town other than Avondale down there, so. I was looking out for our future growth down there, so. I hate for us not to be able to have access to a road later on in the future, so. Okay, yeah, so, no, I'm okay with this. So, looking forward to supporting the data centers coming to Goodyear, so, thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Thank you. We have two items on business. I would like to remind council to wait for a motion in a second before discussing. First one up is business considered Liberty Elementary School District's annexation. You're back up again.
I am. My feet are getting worked out today, I guess, and I'm not even moving, right? Good evening. Christian Williams, Planning Manager, here before you this evening with an annexation request from the Liberty Elementary School District. The request is to annex approximately 16.25 acres of property at the northwest corner of 183rd Avenue alignment and Lower Buckeye Road. That is the halfway point between Citrus Road and Perryville Road, and the applicant is requesting the annexation of the property to facilitate the development of a new elementary school on that property. That subject property is highlighted in yellow. Our city limits are fun in this area, but we have a county island that we completely surround, and that property is within that county island. So zooming in a little bit closer, oopsie. So the following slide will show this, I'm sorry. This is the subject property again. The Pradera subdivision is immediately to the east of there, and they will be building their half-street improvements for 183rd Avenue. The Las Brisas subdivision is immediately to the south of there, so this school is right on the cusp of our city limits, if you will. To the north is a farm in undeveloped Maricopa County. To the west is farm and ranch homes within Maricopa County. So tonight, the applicant is requesting the authorization to proceed with the annexation process. If the annexation is authorized, public hearings will be held before you, just like the one we just had two seconds ago. And then at the future conclusion of this presentation, staff will be seeking your guidance on whether we should move forward or not. On this screen are the annexation policy criteria used for annexation applications. The policies include the ability to serve the property, the long-term desirability, the likelihood that the property would develop in the county, and the general plan compatibility. As mentioned in the previous slide, the property is 16.25 acres, generally located northwest corner of 183rd and Lower Buckeye, and the property is expected to be a public school to serve Goodyear-Buckeye district residents. The city's general plan designates that this area is within the neighborhood land use designation, which provides for the flexibility for a difference of residential type, commercial types, schools, churches, and the existing county zoning for this annexation is RU 43. So upon annexation, the designation of this property would be AG, or AU, Agricultural Urban, and as a note, public schools are permitted in all zoning districts, so no further rezone would be required. From a streets perspective, the property would need to construct their half-street improvements on the north side of Lower Buckeye Park, Lower Buckeye Road, once annexed, and their one lane of improvements for 183rd Avenue adjacent to Pradera, so their half-street improvements. For public safety, the property is located within proximity to an existing police beat. The current level of service within that beat could accommodate an elementary school, and the fire services would be provided at a new station 188 up on Harrison and Citrus, that's about 2.2 miles to the northeast, or 184, which is 3.8 miles to the northeast east. For wastewater and water, the property is within the service area according to Integrated Water Master Plan. However, the city's current water portfolio does not include water resources to serve this property. So if the annexation is authorized to proceed, staff and the applicant will need to address and find a solution for the lack of water resources, and if the school moves forward with development, then we need to construct the required infrastructure, such as water and wastewater lines, in order to facilitate the property. Liberty Elementary is likely going to be seeking an intent-to-serv letter before we annex the property, and because of this, you are likely to have a pre-annexation DA come before you as this process continues if you authorize us to proceed. And the annexation is compatible with the general plan, creating complete neighborhoods that support the needs of residents in the vicinity and the overall Goodyear community. I'll keep that brief, I could go on forever, but I'll be brief. At the end of the day, staff is seeking council's policy advice on whether we should initiate the annexation of approximately 6.2, 16.25 acres of property, the northwest corner of 183rd Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road.
That's it?
That's it. I cut a bunch of stuff out.
Any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a request to speak from the superintendent, Kurt Monroe?
Court.
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 Mayor Pizzillo, City Council members, good evening. My name is Kurt Monroe. I'm the superintendent of schools for the Liberty Elementary School District. I appreciate the few minutes to speak tonight. Since I started as superintendent in Liberty in May of 2023, I've been received as a partner by Mayor Pizzillo, by City Manager Reed, and I appreciate the partnership with the City of Goodyear as we grow together. I'm also excited for Chief Issit and his team to serve the City of Goodyear, and I look forward to supporting him in his new role. As you may know, the Liberty Elementary School District has schools in both Goodyear and Buckeye. We have three schools in Goodyear with a fourth on the way that I'd like to address tonight that you've just heard about. I'd like to personally invite the council this Friday to the groundbreaking of Loretta Zumbro Elementary School at 7:00 AM. It's Friday, September 13th. Don't be scared off by the date. Mayor Pizzillo will be joining us at the groundbreaking, and he'll be offering some brief words during the groundbreaking ceremony. Last month, Liberty Elementary School was finally awarded $24 million from the Arizona State Budget to buy the land and build the school due to our enrollment growth. Liberty will be supplementing with another eight to nine million for construction costs for, for the initial school project phase to open in August 2025. Our team began to meet with city staff beginning in January of this year about the school and the land that we were trying to acquire. I'm here tonight looking for support from the city council in supporting and expediting the annexation process to better support our project to serve the Liberty families in southeast Goodyear. Our plan is to open the school for students in August 2025. You heard that right, that's 11 months out, to alleviate overcrowding in two other nearby schools. This will happen in a phased approach due to our timeline, meaning we're only looking to open three of our five buildings by August to receive students in 2025. To ensure this opening date, we'll need to start construction this month. To do so, we need permits required for the project, building permit, off-site permit. As you can see, the timeline is very tight. When I started to work in May 2023, the project met resistance from the very beginning from the La Privada Amber Meadows land site. We moved off of that original site due to the lack of willingness, willingness, interest, and communication from the other entities. That was very frustrating to me. The land that has now been acquired for the school is off the north side of Lower Buckeye Road between Citrus and Perryville. The areas that surround our new school, as you heard Christian talk about, directly to the north, east, and south are already considered the City of Goodyear jurisdiction, so it makes sense to me that our new property fit in perfectly with this annexation request. Again, tonight I would ask the council to help move the annexation process along to allow us to have a phased school opening in August 2025 to be able to receive students into the new building. I look forward to working collaboratively with the City of Goodyear to cross the finish line on this project for the Liberty students in southeast Goodyear. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Any other cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we have several up to vote, council, I mean, to talk. Councilmember Stip's first?
I have zero problem with the, with the annexation, but I do have two questions, Christian. One is on the, the water situation. Just for the sake of argument, is there a private water provider in that area?
There is not a private water provider anticipated for this school.
Is there a private water provider in the area?
No, this is within our Integrated Water Master Plan jurisdiction, so Goodyear would be the provider if we opt to do so.
Okay. I mean, I realize there's no water to it, water and sewer. The other question that, that I had that Kurt had kind of addressed, but I think bears some further information. My question was, so is there no school land that has been in our approved developments? And I'm hearing that there was, so I, I would like to know why we aren't able to build the school in the land that was supposed to be given to the school by the development that's in that area?
In short, the zoning did contemplate a school there, but there's a private property matter between the, the private landowner and the school district for how that agreement for conveyance would work, and also there's a timing of infrastructure. So if the developer is on a delayed schedule, public roads are needed to serve the school, which can be, cost burdensome on schools if they need to upfront that infrastructure cost.
So the land that was, I'm gonna, I'm gonna restate it, tell me if I've got this right. So the land that was given to the schools is really unusable at this time?
That land was never conveyed to the school. The, the private entity would have to work with the school district on how a conveyance would happen.
Okay, I'd like to get the rest of the details on that later. I don't need it for tonight's discussion, but I'd really like to know what's going on, because one of the things that we've all said for the last, you know, million years is, oh, we work with the schools and we work to get this done, and if we're, if we're, if we've got development that is standing in the way of making that happen, I think we need to know that. Because the last thing that we, it's hard enough to build a school in this state, just in general, and now we've got landowners that are standing in the way of making it harder? I have, I have a major problem with that, and I, I, I would hope that everybody is outraged by, by that situation, that we're forced that we're forcing a school district to go out and buy land so that they can get their project on in an area that probably already needs to be. This school probably needed to be built five years ago based on the way we have to get to overcrowding, and now we've just made it worse. So I'd like to, and I would like the information, not tonight, I'd like it in a written report that we get the down and dirty on the whole thing. I'm fully supportive of this. I'm outraged on your behalf, and I just, I wish it was simpler. That's all I can say. So whatever I can do to help move this along, I'm in your, I mean, I don't want to say in your court. That would be cheesy, but.
All right, before we go, we got a motion and a second is on the board, so I forgot to mention that. So we got it on record now, okay? All right, now.
I should read it. I should just read it.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
So they would actually be voting on to authorize staff to initiate the annexation of approximately 16.25 acres of property, generally located at the northwest corner of South 183rd Avenue and West Lower Buckeye Road.
And there is a motion and a second on.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Are you done, Bill?
I'm done being outraged.
Okay. All right, two. Councilmember Campbell?
Well, I'm not outraged, but I have a couple of questions. I have yet to see a map of the Liberty School District boundaries, and I would appreciate getting one of those because if we're going to try to help them develop their schools, we need to know where they are and where we can put them. And then I'd like to know how large of a student body do they expect at this school? What grades are they going to be teaching? Because I don't want to have to have another conversation with the people in the county that we have to give them a special road so that we don't interfere with them bringing our kids to school. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And if you could let me know later, I don't have to know tonight, but I'd like to know how large the enrollment is, what are the grades? Where do the kids go to school now?
There are several schools in the area, but I know that Las Briesas is one that is.
It's overcrowded.
Overcrowded, yes.
Yeah, the parents are complaining to us every time we bring any kind of a development that the schools are so overcrowded now. I think we need to step up the game to help these schools get their land and get it developed because it's hard enough for them to get the funding to do this from the state. So we're excited, and hopefully it'll go very smoothly. There's hope.
You good?
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, no, I'm supportive of this as well. I had a question. So this will, we don't have any input from any county residents yet because this is going, just the start of the process.
Yes.
So I think there's, is there a church right next to them, to the west of it?
There are a couple churches in the county island area.
I thought there was one right there. I think that's the closest neighbor to them other than the road, so.
There are residents in the area, yes.
And then, yeah, and then going back to the conveyance, does that, I guess this may be a question for Rourke, but does that go to the city first, the conveyance of the land? I'm curious, like in Canyon Trails, there was some land that was given to the school, but there was a, we almost didn't get it, and there was some, there was a commitment there that wasn't, wasn't.
Their private agreement had different clauses in it. So from a city perspective, where we look at entitlement, schools actually can go anywhere by right. So we work with schools on permitting, getting building permits, things of that nature. The private agreements between a school district entity and a home builder, they run the gamut, and they're private agreements. So that agreement in Canyon Trails Oasis was very different than.
Okay, I was just curious. I also make sure if the developer said they were going to give land to the school, that they're still going to get that land, I guess, for whatever they decide to put there in the future, so. But yeah, yeah, it's too bad that they drug their feet on that. Yeah, no, I think it's good. Yeah, but obviously more schools, so I don't see any other issues, so I'm looking forward to another school being in the area, so thank you.
Good. Vice Mayor.
Well, as city council members, we are frequently asked by the public what we do to support schools with all the growth. Are we doing anything? And so this is definitely a way that we can help a local school district in an area that is growing tremendously. And they have a very ambitious timeline with a lot of water infrastructure issues still to be resolved. So I think they're going to hit a challenge. I mean, if that's, it sounds like the water, wastewater, securing the water. And I just want to confirm that the infrastructure costs are borne by the school district?
They are. And just a little bit of information on how we are trying to speed up the process for them. The city of Goodyear will be reviewing their plans to the city standards, and the county is going to be issuing the permits on our approved plans. And then the county will perform the inspections even if we annex. And the county requires permit fees, so they will pay for the building permits in the county, but not plan or view fees with Goodyear, because we're the county's third party in this instance. And Goodyear will be charging the impact fees, and then the state fire marshal's office will be doing the permits and the plan review and the inspections. And that is our way to try to speed them up because they're not within the city, but we're trying to help out our neighbors.
All right, well, that explains a lot. Appreciate it. And so the county inspection is comparable to what our own inspection would be.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, council member.
Thank you very much for bringing this forward. That school is definitely needed. I'm a former Liberty parent of children that went to one of the schools up there, Estrella. And living up in Estrella, I do hear we have friends that are still teachers in some of those schools, that they are overcrowded. The growth in that area from Estrella on down to West Goodyear is just amazing. A lot of the families are moving in there, so this is definitely needing, needed. I will share a tad bit of Bill's, Councilmember Stipp's outrage, because I would like to know, like, when we have these sites, I 100% support this, but I know there was a site up in Estrella that got moved a couple times. When you send out the memo on like what happened with this site, could you let us know where that site is supposed to be now in Estrella for the other school up there someday? I know it's been moved. It was by the Presidio and then got moved a couple times. So we do support that, and so thank you for bringing that forward.
Yeah, I'm 100% behind this. So with that, can we go ahead and open the vote? Passes seven zero. Thank you, Christian. Last item for business, consider an in-kind request for community special events. Please introduce yourself for the public.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director. Tonight's recommendation directly supports city council's focus area, providing a safe and vibrant community. This past year, Goodyear's community events attracted over 120,000 participants. That's a 17% increase year over year. These events build community by providing opportunities for the community to gather, engaging in new experiences, and creating lifelong memories. And those of you may recall, that certainly is true in my case, in that I met my wife at a community event in a city park 27 years ago. So this really works. According to our most recent resident survey, events continue to be the very most top priority for our residents. And tonight's partnership, the partnerships you will consider this evening, allow us to expand these opportunities for our residents at a fraction of the cost. And without further ado, we will have our own guru who needs no introduction, Kailene Ozlansky, the Arts and Culture Administrator, will present this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Nathan shared, special events provide multifaceted benefits for our community. This evening, we're here to look at partnering with two outside organizations to bring events to Goodyear. This is the American Heart Association for the West Valley Heart Walk and SkaterCon. Both organizations have representatives in the audience with us this evening. The first event we're going to look at here is the West Valley Heart Walk. So the Heart Association held the first West Valley Heart Walk last year, and it was an overwhelming success, to the point to where the event wasn't even over, and we were talking about when are we having the second one? So the second event is scheduled for November 16th, 2024, here at beautiful Civic Square. The event includes a festival and a walk, and the walk includes a one and three-mile path. The festival kicks off the event at 9:00 AM and includes kid activities, sponsor booths, a memorial and survivors' area. And the walk then begins at 10:00 AM with people choosing which path they'd like to complete, the one or three miles. Along the way, there's music, there's water stations to keep everyone motivated, and the entire event is concluded by noon. This partnership with the Heart Association is a free recreational opportunity and provides a sense of community for Goodyear. Anyone is welcome to participate at the event for free. Those who would like to help the American Heart Association's mission are welcome to create a team and fundraise, but this is not required. Last year, the event brought together over 3,000 people, and we anticipate it to grow to 5,000. So for the event, the Heart Association is requesting support that focuses on event safety and parking. Here on this slide, you're going to see a summary of cost impacts, excuse me, that involve multiple departments for a total of $8,600. This will be the in-kind support that they are requesting. So moving on is our second event that we're looking at this evening, and this is SkaterCon. And SkaterCon is new to Goodyear, but it is not a new event. This will be the 10th year that this growing event is going to host. The event will be held at Goodyear Community Park on February 22nd, 2025, from 10 to 6 PM. This event is a celebration of all things skateboarding. It was developed to highlight the past, present, and future of skateboarding culture, and it brings together those that love the sport, but it's also a great place for those that want to learn more about skateboarding. The event will have professional skateboard discussions and demonstrations. It has contests. It has meet and greets with pro skaters, so people can get autographs. There's a panel discussion with industry leaders, local vendors and food trucks, and of course, live music. The first event they hosted had just over 100 attendees, and they've grown it to over 1,500 in the most recent years. We anticipate that hosting this event in Goodyear will grow the attendance even further. In this 10th year of SkaterCon, the organizers have secured new event sponsorships from vans and local Grimaldi's and Filberto's. The organizers reached out to Goodyear to move the event here because of the quality of our skate park. The features in our skate park are excellent for, you know, someone that's a very advanced skater, but there's also areas that if you're a novice skater, you can skate there as well. They also like the fact of the number of local hotels that we have in our city because of 40% of their participants and attendees last year came from outside of Maricopa County, and they needed a place so that these people could get some hotel rooms. And finally, they really like the proximity to the I-10 for people to travel into this event. It's great just coming right off the 10, up Litchfield Road, and you're at Goodyear Community Park. This event is ticketed with ticket prices of $25, and 10 and under are free. With the approval of in-kind support, Goodyear will be given 370 free tickets for Goodyear residents. These free tickets are equal to the amount of the in-kind request of $9,250. That represents the direct benefit of this support. If all free tickets are not redeemed by Goodyear residents, which I would say would be highly unlikely, SkaterCon will reimburse the city any difference there. Here is a summary of the scheduled cost to host the event for a total of the $9,250 in in-kind support. So Mayor and Council, when looking at these two events, the total cost for them is $17,850. They will both provide activities that appeal to various demographics and complement the Goodyear special event lineup. These expenses were not budgeted for fiscal year 2025, so we are asking to utilize the city manager's contingency funds, and these expenses would be distributed to the various departments supporting the events. In closing, these two events help to expand special event offerings in Goodyear in a cost-effective way. Staff is requesting approval to provide in-kind support of city staffing, permitting fees, and water for parking lot treatment to support two community events and the associated budget transfers. With that, this concludes my presentations, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to say anything? With that, with the council, please enter a motion and a second to approve the request to provide in-kind support of city staffing, permitting fees, water for the parking lot treatment to support two community events and associated budget transfers. I see a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and open up our discussion. First one up, Councilmember Loretano.
Thank you so much for bringing both of these events to us. We did the heart walk last year, and that was a lot of fun. There were people from all ages walking, families, people with their dogs, so I think it's a great event for our community. And the skater, what's it called, skater? SkaterCon. SkaterCon. I think that will grow, and the fact that it brings so many people in here, it's kind of edgy, kind of unique. And what I really like about it is the fact that it's something for our older teen, young adult, I mean, there's going to obviously be things for families, but it's really something a lot of your older teens and young adults are into, that we really don't always have that niche. So I think it's great. It's worth the money, and I think both of those will definitely put us on the map and continue to grow. So thank you for bringing them forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Stipp?
I can't do the heart walk. I don't have one, so.
Oh.
No. It's a good point. The, yeah, it's a good point. Everybody knows that. But the SkaterCon.
You're going to do that?
Yeah, exactly. Bring your cameras, because it'll only happen once. I think that's, that is a great, that'll be a great event, but I've got some concerns, and I'm going to say about the location, and I realize we can't do it anywhere else, but I think when we look at that particular area and 1,500 people showing up, obviously the parking lot in front of the skate park is about 25 cars. And I think even the community park, parking lot is not sufficient to hold that kind of quantity. So how do we, how do we plan to kind of address and work with that? I don't want to say yes to an event and find out that it turns into a complete nightmare for particularly the people living across the street in the subdivision across the street, that they just get inundated with all these people that are now coming through. So what's the, kind of the general, I don't want to know the specific parking plan, but what's the plan?
Mayor, Councilmember Stipp, that's an excellent question. And before this special event permit is approved, there does, there needs to be a parking plan for this many people. At this time, the applicant is working with Estrella Mountain Community College. They've offered some parking and that we would need to use probably some trolleys of some sort. The YMCA has agreed that the trolley can pull in there to drop people off, and that would be, there's an access point right to the skate park from there. They also are looking into some of the businesses, the business community that's right across the street there, that it's Medical Plaza is kind of over there, looking to see if they're able to allow for some parking. And so we are looking at what a parking plan is to ensure that there are enough parking spaces for the attendance that we anticipate for the day.
Because I, you know, like I said, I'm very supportive of that, and I think the thing that will make this a one and done event is going to be how we pre-plan for all of those kinds of activities, making sure that, you know, we're not, we're supporting the event, but we're not doing it at the detriment of the existing residents. Litchfield Road is a pretty major north-south corridor, particularly on the weekends, so I want to make sure that we're not shutting down roadways and doing that kind of stuff, you know, that we've got the ability to move people in and around there. And then the only other issue that I was looking at the chart for the special event, et cetera, and kind of thinking about this long term, is we have a lot of special events, which is great. I worry about PD burnout at special events, that we get, I don't know how many officers it takes, but I'm going to guess it's at least twice as many as the fire because the budget is at least twice that. What the heck?
I didn't hear.
I don't know. Okay.
We're still good. We still have microphones.
If we'd have spent 90 million, we wouldn't have had these problems. We spent 86.
[laughing]
I'm going to stick with that. So anyway, I don't know how that's going to feed into next year's budgeting. So anyway, I, I don't know how that's going to feed into next year's budgeting for PD staffing requests, but I think we've got to, we have to be aware of the second and third order effects of all these, all these great things that we're doing, that they're going to have an, an impact to, to how we're handling it. So I think just kind of putting that up on the radar now. We can't do it without PD, or fire for that matter, obviously, but just making sure that we're not burning that, burning our staff out through the continued special event process. And if I remember the calendar correctly, and I'm just going to look over your shoulder and look at Nathan, this is just before spring training, right? Before spring training? So we don't have a conflict with hotels, that's the, okay. And, and I think that those.
Mayor, Councilmember Stip, I think it's the same day as opening day of spring training is this date, and, but we have confirmed that there's not as, we feel like we have enough hotels and hotel rooms in our inventory that we can manage both of those, that it won't be an impact.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't want to get into that level of detail, but as we look at future events, I think we've got to be cognizant of, of, of doing that. I, I think we've got to take the chance, we've got to give it a shot. The skating community is still strong, and if they've grown from 100 to 1,500, we can give them a good venue, maybe we can do even more, so thanks for bringing these forward.
Vice Mayor?
Kailene, these are two solid events, that, I support them both, and I love the innovation of bringing new and different things to Goodyear. My question has to do with the, the in-kind, do we have a methodology on how we determine whether or not to do in-kind?
So these two events specifically, these organizations reached out to the City of Goodyear specifically, and they requested the in-kind support. Internally, we evaluated the events, we compared those to what we do have to offer in our event lineup. As Councilmember Lortano mentioned, you know, a skater con, it's a, it's a niche that we, we don't fill right now, it celebrates an amenity we have here in our city. The American Heart Association, it really aligned with the values of the city, we wanted to have this other recreational opportunity here, and so those were the reasons why we took that into consideration, and then we worked that through our organization, up through the city manager's office to identify if that's a viable option to bring to council for approval.
Great, thank you so much.
Councilmember Campbell?
I just have a couple of questions. Is this West Valley Heart Walk taking the place of a Brazos Heart Walk that we used to do around the ballpark?
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, we are still going to have our Heart and Soul Walk in February, it's not taking the place of it, this is in addition to it, so we will still have our Heart Walk, that we are, our Heart and Soul 5K is what it is in February at the ballpark, and this is a Heart Walk by the American Heart Association that will be here at City Hall, so both events will still occur.
Yeah, Heart and Soul is so important to this city. It really is, and I don't want to do anything to take away from it or cause it not to be held.
Agreed, and it's.
It's just a wonderful opportunity for our residents.
It's our signature event.
You've got to remember, are we going to shut down the library again?
Yes.
Which is terrible, we shouldn't do that, but I know, I don't know any other way to do it, I hate to do that.
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, we have already spoke with the library, they're aware that, that would be a closure, and they were okay with that. Last year, we had a couple closures because they had some professional development and some different things, and we've asked if we can kind of align those things so they happen at the same time, so we have very limited closures, so we will be closing the library for that day, but they won't close for us.
All day?
Yes, correct, we're going to go ahead and close for all day on Saturday.
I hate to do that, because we have people that aren't going to do the Heart Walk, and they're going to want to go to the library, and then they can't go to the library. So, and then my last question for the SkaterCon, are, is it going to be live music?
Yes, there will be live music.
Is there any possibility we're going to have music by Alice Cooper School of Rock Kids do that? It's a thought.
Thank you, yes, I really agree with you, we love to create any synergy that we can create between those two organizations.
These are kids that are doing this, so.
Yes, I totally agree, and we will definitely connect them, the SkaterCon organizers, with Alice Cooper and see what we can get done.
That'd be great, and hopefully one of the headliners, Tony Hawk or Ryan Sheckler will be there, that'll really jive up the audience, because these kids that are skateboard, they're, they're a talented group. It's a wonder they don't get killed, but they love doing it.
We love that you know your skaters.
Yeah, they're great, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
You just got to let them know that Wally wants to listen to some heavy metal music while that's going on, okay?
So.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hampton.
Everybody pretty much said a lot of things, I'm super excited about all these events, I think they're a great asset to the city, I think SkaterCon would be a, a great thing as well. I see the great partnerships with Alice Cooper, even Katz Artistry as well, I know they have a band as well, and there's also some other, I'm sure, talented people around the area, that would be great to have some more local bands there. So yeah, so no, I appreciate the parking situation that you're working on there, and anything I can do to help support, support these events, that'd be great as well. And then the Heart and Soul's a 5K, not a 10K anymore, right? I think it was at one point a 10K, I think.
Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, yes, one year we did dip into trying to do the 10K, it will continue to stay as a 5K though.
That's fine, I remember running there and then doing the 10K, but yeah, so, okay, no, it's good. Yeah, I'm glad, thank you for bringing these, these events to us, new fun events, and if we can use the parking garage as a, a new parking garage as a place to skate ahead of time before that opens, that might be fun too, so.
I hope it's ready.
I don't think so.
City manager's already told me no, but I think that'd be a great idea. If we can go bike riding on the 101 before it opens, we can, we can use the, we can use the parking garage as a skate park for a day too, so, all right, thank you.
I'm seeing that head shake out there, that is a no. Go ahead, Councilmember Gillis.
I'm in support of both of these things, they're kind of on two ends of the spectrum, but I kind of like them both. I'm really excited about the skateboard thing, I think those skateboards are just awesome, and I'm hoping that we can make it even bigger for this city, because that's a really awesome sport, and I like watching kids do that, so, good idea.
You know, Kailene, in the past, Estrella Mountain Community College has been a great partnership, and they've had bus shuttles from that huge parking lot they have, even though they have, is this going to be on a Saturday?
Yes.
Probably, even though if it's on a Saturday, that, that parking lot's still pretty empty, so you could shuttle it from up there, you should find plenty of, whoops, you should find plenty of people that'll partner with you on there, because I remember some of the events we've had where, we've had the parades up there, where we had them shuttling from there, so, that, yeah, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be an issue, so. I appreciate it, I'm 100% with you as well, so with that, can we, we've got a motion and a second, can we go ahead and open up for the vote? Passes seven zero, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does the council have any comments, commendations, or reports on current events or requests for future items? Far left, go ahead.
I actually have a couple of comments that I want to make to our chiefs, fire and police. This weekend, we did have our 9/11 breakfast, or actually during the week, we had our 9/11 breakfast, and Paul, it was really well received, and it was really well done, and your remarks, because you know that I lost people on 9/11, and they meant a lot to me, especially when you commented on the people that have died since 9/11 that a lot of people don't comment on, from the toxicities that were at Ground Zero. I told you that day, it meant a lot to me, but I just want everybody to know that that is so important to remember, those people, remember the sacrifices that they made and are still making today, and I thank you for doing that, and I loved the event, I thought it was awesome. Chief Isit, I want to say to you my heartfelt condolences, and I know you come from Phoenix, and I know that you went through a horrible tragedy with Tyler not long ago, and I am so sorry what happened to Zane Coolidge, and I, my heart is breaking for his wife, Kristin, and their four-month-old daughter, Ellen. I think that's something that we need to remember, his daughter is four months old. And I'm hoping that we can get a handle on some of this stuff that's going out there, because it's going on out there, because I think that it is a tragedy, a tragedy, a travesty, that our cops are being, this is happening, targeted this way. This young couple and this four-month-old daughter will never see her daddy, and I just want to say I'm so sorry, because I know you know these people, and I think the world of you, and my heartfelt condolences are with you and your family as well as them.
Councilmember Stip?
I may be stealing a little of "When It's Thunder" tonight, but I did want to recognize the Parks and Rec Department for their, for their award of the Outstanding Cultural Awareness Program Award for the Juneteenth at the Arizona Parks and Rec Association event, I'm looking for Nathan, there he is. You know, it's a, we talk about all these things that we do, and we never really realize necessarily the impact, but, and I know we sent out a press release just as the council meeting was getting started, so, but I think at the end of the meeting tonight, you know, I'm always the first to criticize, and I'm never the first to congratulate, but I wanted to do that on this, this particular thing, so Nathan, congratulations to you and the staff, and I know it's not just you, I know that there's hundreds of people that work to get that done, but it's pretty cool working on the, these kinds of things for the community, and, and I don't think we really realize how diverse our community is, and getting an opportunity to celebrate that is really important, so thank you to everybody.
Anything over here? Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, it was great to celebrate also the, the gala for the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce and all the small businesses that were there, and recognizing how, how much hard work they put in our community, and how they're the backbone of our, of our community, so it was really good to celebrate that and recognize the different people, some were Goodyear residents as well, that won some of the awards, so that was good also, so, and yeah, and also kudos to our Parks and Rec Department, they do a great job, so for the awards that they keep receiving, we have award-winning staff members here in the City of Goodyear, so it's great that we hire great people that, that, that push the bar and keep winning awards, so thank you to all the staff for all that they do, so thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I'm going to call her out, future council member, sits in January, Vanita Beckles, was part of the committee, I don't know all of your members that were involved, but I know you played a big role in putting that event on, so I want to thank you for that. Again, I don't know the others, so whoever your team was, thank them for me, for putting that on, so on Juneteenth, okay? Thank you. With that, many, city manager have anything?
No, I think Councilmember Stip and Hampton covered the Juneteenth recognition, other than to say I'm very proud of our staff and we've got the best team ever.
Okay, thank you. Next meeting will be September 16th, 2024, with that, meeting is adjourned.